Hearing. Now for. Initial use permit twenty twenty four oh one.
You want to ask for a general case?
I'm going to be the key deal member in public hearing. Moving to the reservation.
Okay. All favor.
Okay, well, I see our. Owner isn't attendance. I was invited to attend by Zoom. Last I spoke with him, he was back in Canada. So I'll do my best to represent on his behalf. I see adjacent property owners, so that's good. Um, Taylor is purchasing two seventeen Main Street. It's right on the corner of Main and Pine Avenue. Actually from Georgia Burnage. And he is running a business. And that building is in a business district. It's in B three. It'll be a garden center and wholesale decorative products. What Tyler is requesting the variance for is to provide living porters inside the building for him and his family at the same time while he operates out of the building. We've done this in the past, most recently to. JM Card Brackit upstairs. So same thing goes. This would be a variance allowing that. And initial use permit would follow. Follow those means, so. A letter that was included in the packet was provided to all adjacent landowners as per the ordinance. No feedback was provided outside of this public hearing to myself to provide at the hearing. So I imagine at this time Celestis have questions and that's why you're present. Like otherwise Q and A would probably be appropriate at this unless the council has any questions on the packet.
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't think so. I mean, I just really. Hope I was going to get a letter. We've been very busy because we were given so much time to get this stuff out and it's. It was full from front to back.
I seen it.
And I mean, we, we really thought we were going to open up a business and, and it never happened. And so he gave us enough time to get it out. But we were hoping to do the same thing at some point to. Do it, but we've had it nine years and many pieces of property flicker. Here we are hoping I, everything I've seen about the man and about this Tyler and his business and on the internet and Facebook would only be a blessing. Black that gets hard that things. It's beautiful what his family and what he's done. So I, I would hope it go through. And it would only give value if he didn't make it. And he puts in a home to tell me we still owe family something. If it went back that way, if something happened to us or the, the inheritance of people who did it, they would only bring value to the building.
Do I also have any favor?
No questions then.
No question.
No questions.
I'd just like to say, I'm always a little bit amused when I get these requests because we have to use special permission. This town was built on people living above the store and behind the store. So I'm always amused when we have to give people permission to live in the building if they operate a business. I grew up across the alley from three people, three entire families who lived above or behind the stores and raised their, all their children there through graduation to high school. One of the girls of, of this building right over here, Anderson's, was my age. And they lived there for decades. It's just a normal thing. And the middle building was the old coast to coast store where three different families lived up above. And the building that is now found North Goods used to be Mende Cardward and they lived in the back. Slightly, I think they built something up there. People living up above the store and operating a business and benefiting the town and the elevations seems normal to me. So I don't know why we wouldn't approve this.
Well, the final approval will be at the August council meeting.
Okay.
Okay, that's obviously planned to put it on a separate agenda. This is just for the okay.
So we'll, we'll vote on it at that point.
That is correct. Yeah.
I don't have any questions.
I would suggest asking two more times.
Definitely do that. Anybody else have any questions or? Yep. Two more questions, anybody? All that said, I think we can close the special meeting and open up our regular work session meeting.
Motion second please.
I will be close the public hearing and open the regular council work session.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Are you have a second? Next, okay. Bring your vote on please. You had a first and a second, but you didn't call for, call for a vote.
Hi, hi. Great.
Okay, I'll help you through it. Perfect. Now you just need to approve your work session agenda. I imagine you guys got to open up the other packet.
Through the work session. Second round.
You have a first and a second. Do you need a vote?
Thank you for voting on that. Hi, hi.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
Your motion carries. Okay, I'll do the first reading of the ordinance and then that's on the agenda. As I don't want to do it. I'm not going to step in actually. Now everybody can go sleep.
But do we have to move the agenda?
You just said.
Okay, do we have to? Go away with the, like we can solve.
Yeah, we're going to do that.
All right.
Yeah, we're going to do that. Okay. This was an ordinance amending chapter eleven licensing revising section eleven fifty like rental licensing. The city of council of Blackduck, Minnesota ordains the city code section eleven fifty oh two and chapter eleven licensing. Rental licensing is modified as follows with new language underlined and deleted language struck out. Definitions rental unit or residential rental unit shall mean a building that is rented leased, let or sublet and used in whole or in part as a dwelling, including single family units such as apartments and structures containing both dwelling units and units used for non-dwelling purposes and includes manufactured homes. Dwelling shall mean any building or other permanent or temporary structure, including a manufactured home, which is wholly or partly used or intended to be used for living or sleeping by human occupants. Rent, lease, let or sublet shall mean providing a rental unit to a non-owner for a fixed or non-fixed for period of time and shall include lease to buy installment sales and other similar arrangements whereby non-payment of a periodic payment means the occupants may be evicted without the necessity of a statutory mortgage foreclosure procedure, a procedure or a statutory termination of contract for deed procedure or a statutory repossession procedure. Shall or must, as used in this ordinance, are each mandatory. Should or may, as used in this ordinance, are each permissive or directory. City administrator shall mean the city of Blackduck city administrator or such other person as the city administrator may designate to carry out responsibilities of the city administrator as provided in this ordinance. Registration folder means a person or entity to whom registration for rental unit is issued under this ordinance. Local property manager means a natural person residing within fifty miles of the city of Blackduck who is authorized by the rental unit owner to make decisions for the owner about rental occupancy and maintenance of the rental unit. Qualified family member means parent or child and grand or grandparent or grandchild. Section two, the following language is added to the city code section eleven fifty oh three rental licensing. Registration and license requirements subdivision one, it is unlawful for any person to hereafter occupy, allowed to be occupied or let to another person for occupancy, any residential rental property within the city for which a registration statement has not been properly made and filed with the city, with Blackduck City Hall and for which there is not an effective license. Subdivision two, initial registration and renewal shall be made upon forms furnished by the city for such purpose and shall specifically require the following minimum information. A, name, address and phone number of the property owner. In cases where the property is subject to a contract for deed, the contract for deed then D shall be considered the owner for the purpose of this ordinance. B, name, address, phone number of the local property manager. C, name, phone number and address of any person authorized to make or order repairs or services for the property if in violation of the city or state codes, if the person is different than the owners. D, the street address of the rental property. E, the number of types of units, excuse me, the number and types of units within the rental property dwelling unit or sleeping rooms. F, the maximum number of occupants permitted for each dwelling unit or sleeping room. And G, off-street parking arrangements. Subdivision two, each rental unit must have an owner or local property manager designated by the owner who resides within fifty miles of the city of Blackduck. Section three, the following language is added to chapter eleven. Section four, manner of registration and renewal. Subdivision one, the owner or designated agent shall make initial registration before offering the dwelling for lease. Section four, the following language is added to the city code section oh eight. Fees subdivision one, the council may establish from time to time in the ordinance establishing fees and charges the fee for license and inspection. Failure to pay appropriate fees will result in revocation of the rental license. Section five, the following language is added to the chapter eleven. Section minimum standards, maintenance standards. Subdivision one, minimum standards. Every rental unit must be maintained in compliance with city ordinances as well as state law, including the building code and fire code as now enforced and hereafter amended. Rental unit registration does not constitute compliance with any codes, standards, ordinances or statutes by the city of Blackduck. No person or entity shall rent, lease, let or sublet a rental unit to another person or entity for human occupancy unless the rental unit meets the following minimum standards. A, every single dwelling or apartment shall contain a kitchen sink in good working condition and properly connected to a water sewer system. B, every single dwelling and apartment shall contain a room which affords privacy to a person within said room and which is equipped with a flush water closet and lavatory basin in good working condition and properly connected to a water and sewer system. C, every single dwelling and apartment shall contain a room which affords privacy to a person within said room, a bathtub or shower in good working condition and properly connected to a water and sewer system. D, every kitchen sink, lavatory basin and bathtub are required herein shall be properly connected to both hot water and cold water lines. E, every single dwelling and apartment shall be supplied with adequate refuse storage facilities. All refuse containers shall be made of rust resistant material equipped for suitable handles and tight fitting covers shall be watertight and berman proof with tampered side walls and shall have a capacity of not more than, not more than thirty-two gallons. Refuge containers shall be kept by the responsible tenant or by the collector when supplied by the collector in good repair of, free of ragged or sharp edges and other defects likely to injure or hamper the person using the same or collecting contents thereof. All refuse containers shall be kept as near. Shall be kept as near. Ah, lost my place. The rear of the premise as practical at the alley, if there be an alley as such place and shall be located so as to be easily accessible to the collector. Such containers shall be kept at least twelve inches above the ground on impervious surface. All garbage before being placed in container shall be drained of all free liquids and wrapped in paper that which may be disposed of by means of garbage disposal units connected to the sanitary system of the city. Every dwelling shall have two independent unobstructed exits. Neither which is through another rental unit. When the secondary exit is a window, it shall one be not less than five point seven square feet in area. Two, have a minimum width of twenty inches. Three, have a minimum height of twenty-four inches and four have a maximum sill height of four feet. The exit shall lead to safe and open space as required by the laws state of Minnesota. G, every dwelling shall have adequate natural and artificial lighting. H, every dwelling shall have adequate ventilation and every bedroom shall have at least one window or skylight which can be easily opened. I, every dwelling should have heating facilities that are properly installed, are maintained in a safe and good working condition and are capable of safely heating all inhabitable rooms and bathrooms to a temperature of at least sixty-eight degrees Fahrenheit at a distance of three feet above the floor and three feet from an outside wall, window or door when the outside temperature is negative twenty-five Fahrenheit. Every public hall, hall and stairway in every apartment house shall be lighted at all times so as to provide illumination of at least two foot candles on every part of such area. Smoke alarm shall be installed in the following locations, each sleeping room, outside of each sleeping room, in the immediate vicinity of the sleeping rooms, on each story of the dwelling, includes basements and cellars. Every sleeping room must have an egress window that shall be not less than five point seven square feet in area, have a minimum width of twenty inches, have a minimum height of twenty-four inches and have a maximum sill height of four feet. Section six, following language is added to the code, chapter eleven inspections and investigations. Authorized personnel, except as otherwise provided herein, all inspections will be undertaken by the city building official. Fire department personnel, city administration administrator, police officers and the public works directors, director and the respective that the means and representatives are hereby authorized to make inspections reasonably necessary to enforce this ordinance. Section seven, following language is added to the city code as section eleven fifty twelve. On in chapter eleven, conduct of licensed, of licensed premises. Subdivision one, definition of disorderly conduct. It shall be the primary responsibility of the licensee to require and ensure that occupants of the licensed premises conduct themselves in such a manner as to not cause the premises to be disorderly or to be used, occupied or maintained in violation of any law, local ordinance or regulation. Unlawful activities include, but are not limited to the following. A, contact which, conduct which constitutes a violation of Minnesota statute or city code relating to nuisances as it now exists or as hereafter amended. B, contact with conduct which constitutes a violation of Minnesota statutes or city code relating to noise as it now exists or as hereafter amended. C, conduct which constitutes disorderly conduct in violation of Minnesota statute six oh nine dot seven two as it now exists or as hereafter amended. D, conduct which constitutes a violation of laws relating to possession of controlled substances pursuant to Minnesota statute, chapter one fifty-two as it now exists or as hereafter amended. E, conduct which constitutes a violation of any city ordinance or state law relating to minors possessing or consuming alcohol or relating to providing, furnishing or serving alcohol to minors or relating to sale of alcoholic beverages. F, conduct which constitutes a violation of state laws or city ordinances relating to prostitution indecent exposure or acts related to prostitution as defined by state law. G, conduct which constitutes a violation of city ordinances and state laws relating to weapons or firearms. H, conduct which constitutes a violation of city ordinances or state laws relating to assault specifically including domestic assaults and criminal sexual conduct. I, conduct which constitutes a violation of ordinances or laws relating to contributing to the, the need for protection, services or delinquency of a minor as defined in Minnesota statute two sixty dot three one five as it now exists or as hereafter amended. J, conduct which constitutes a violation of any other federal, state or local code, ordinance or regulation and which is reasonably likely to threaten any or harass tenants or visitors to rental units or to residents, visitors or occupants of neighboring properties. K, conduct which constitutes a violation of any other federal, state or local code ordinance or regulation. Section eight, following language is added to the city code section eleven fifty one six in chapter eleven licensing violations, injunctive relief subdivision two penalty. Any person violating any of the provisions of this ordinance by doing any act or omitting to do any act which constitutes, constitutes a breach of any section of this ordinance shall upon conviction thereof by lawful authority be punished by a fine not to exceed seven hundred dollars and or by imprisonment not to exceed ninety days, together with the costs of prosecution. Each day that a violation continues shall be deemed a separate punishable offense. No provision of this ordinance designating the duties of any official or employee of the city of Blackduck shall be so construed as to make such official or employee liable for the penalty provided in this section because of failure to perform such duty unless the intention of the city council to impose, impose such penalty on such official or employee is specifically and clearly expressed in the section creating the duty. Now, then it just goes on with the effective date. That includes the first reading. Any questions?
So that's all the new words in it?
That's all. Well, that's the, that's the ordinance. Yes. Those are all the sections that are being amended. The full ordinance is quite longer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have the whole business. For the, to our financial audit presentation.
Yes, I have John Roscoe here from Miller McDonald. He was here last year. Everybody should have this in their packet too. You're up.
Can you mention that John Roscoe with Miller McDonald? Thank you for having me here. Evening. We did the twenty twenty-three audit for the city of Blackduck. The purpose of the audit is to provide an opinion on whether or not the balances in the note disclosures are presented fairly in all material respects. The financial statements are broken down in multiple opinion units and each one has their own materiality level. So just as a reference, when we were talking about the audit and their opinion, the general fund had a materiality of seventeen thousand this year, whereas Gulf had a materiality of eight thousand. Waters was twenty-three, sewer nineteen and liquor twenty. And then when you combine the funds together, the government wide had a sixty-seven thousand materiality and the business type is forty-two thousand. So just kind of as a reference when we're talking about the audit opinion and the financial statements, we're not in the audit drilling down to a lot of individual accounts and small transactions. It's more of the big picture of the city as a whole and what's significant to each fund based off of those material levels. The city did receive an unmodified opinion on all of its opinion units, which is the opinion the city's looking for. It means that the balances and the disclosures were presented barely in all material respects. And in addition to the financial statement audit, in the back on page one hundred, there's a letter that is for both internal controls and Minnesota legal compliance. The state auditor has selected statutes that they want reviewed for compliance during the year. If there's any issues noted, we, they are included in the report as a finding. The city did have one this year, number twenty twenty-three six. And it relates to the bidding poll process. So there's two quotes that we selected to review during the year or during the audit that did not have quotes on file. And so the city still had the invoice on file, but not the original quotes. The statute requires that not only the quote that you approved, but the other quotes you analyzed and received on that purchase be retained. The other part of the letter relates to internal controls. We don't audit the internal controls during and provide an opinion on them. However, we do have to gain an understanding of those controls during the audit process as part of the planning and determining the procedures necessary for the audit. During that process, if we find any deficiencies in internal control, they are evaluated to determine whether or not they rise to the level of either significant deficiency or material weakness. Material weakness is the, I guess, worse of the two. I mean, some material item would not be detected and corrected in timely manner. Significant deficiency is less in scope than material, but significant enough that it warrants presentation and communication to governance. So there were few this year, the first two segregation duties and financial statement preparation are one that occurred in the past, the size of the city, you don't have enough staff available to properly segregate duties. So it's again common for the city your size. So if anything I would be overly concerned of, it's one reminder is that monitoring is kind of a key control for the city's finance department because of the lack of staffing and city councils, a key part of that. So just to continue the, the monitoring process from that standpoint. One new one this year was the credit card receivable reconciliation. We noted during the audit process, one of the receipts for the credit cards where they were put into the wrong fund between the Gulf and the general fund. And so reconciling that monthly would help detect that error more timely. So that was our suggestion. Dollar amount wise, it was a state as a, so the lower level. There were a couple of findings that we did note as material weaknesses. The first one is related to material adjustments and we'll look at that a little bit more with the letter to the council. But the audit is not part of your internal control. So adjustments that are material in nature to the financial statement to get the financial statements to be presented materially, presented fairly in all material respects. be presented materially, presented fairly in all material respects. Those items then kind of create a material material weakness in the internal control process. The other one had to do the reconciliation of transfers. Transfers did not net to zero. So that's something that should always be monitoring is that your transfer transactions in in and out net to zero. The during the year, there was about eighty-six thousand dollars in revenue overstated and there eighty-five thousand dollars in revenue overstated and forty-six thousand dollars in expenses overstated because they were part of the transfer transactions that they were going to to other accounts. So that was the reason for the that finding. So the recommendation, I guess, it's just a at the end of each month, making sure that those transfer accounts are net to zero to make sure the entries were properly entered. Any questions over there?
So with the lack of staffing in our small in our small city, how are we accountable for doing that?
Well, you separate the procedure as much as possible, which is, but the main thing I said, what is the monitoring on the review process? So there's the proper segregation duties really would mean you have steps in place and and the transaction would hit multiple people before it got to actually like the bill was paid. You know, who's getting the mail, who's recording it, who's approving and reviewing it? So if there was a check that wasn't shouldn't be cut, you would be caught prior to that. With the amount of staffing you have, really, it's more on the monitoring and and seeing, you know, when you guys review and approve the bills. Maybe that's just kind of one example. Same thing with journal entries if one person really doing it. Just reviewing those financials. Well, that's the that's the key aspect. You do have segregation in areas with the staffing you have. It's just to have a by definition, a proper segregation of duty is in the financial statement process. You just don't have enough staff. So it's really monitoring up back there. There's a second letter on page one oh two that relates to a single audit because of the maintenance facility project, the funding. Even though you're repaying the debt, it's still considered federal assistance. And so you have to have a single audit because when you exceeded the threshold of seven hundred fifty thousand during the year. It's compliance audits and we didn't have any findings related to the maintenance facility funding. And that one is a little bit different than one debt that you've had before is you will have a continuing compliance requirement because of the building has restrictions on how you can use it. And so until you get that debt down below the seven hundred fifty thousand along with your other federal orders, you will have a single audit. As far as the balances and the individual funds, you go to page seventeen, just a couple of key points that were fluctuations, unusual fluctuations from prior years. The general fund did have a significant increase in its fund balance of two hundred fifty thousand. That was mainly related to the proceeds of the buildings, the unused buildings that you received during the year and also the closing of a couple of debt service funds. The so the operating transfer in of a hundred and forty-one thousand was higher than normal just because of those debt funds were closed. There was cash remaining in the fund after the debt was paid off. So you pulls those funds and move the cash to the general fund. So that's the reason for that. You go to page nineteen on the liquor fund. You know, annually annually, you've had a been having a deficit fund balance in the unrestricted portion of net position. That's mainly related to the net pension liability amount. So you have a long term liability of two hundred twenty-eight thousand that is not related to any cash flow or any control that the city has. And so without that, you have around a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in unrestricted net position. However, a hundred and thirty-six of it is from the loan to the Gulf Fund. So that did go down this year about thirty-five thousand. However, ten of it was from the Gulf and twenty-five was from the general fund. Twenty-five thousand of that loan had got transferred over to the general fund essentially because of the cash flow. We can look on the page, the next page on twenty-one and twenty-two. So the liquor fund did provide eighty-four thousand dollars in operating cash flow. However, with the other scheduled transfers, transfers out and the debt payments, the cash balance without the general fund picking up a part of that debt would have been a deficit. So that was the the reason for the twenty-five thousand dollars going over to the general fund. But all three enterprise funds does have did have a positive cash flow from operations. The water fund was sixteen thousand, municipal sewer was twenty-five thousand, and the liquor fund was eighty-four thousand. They show operating losses. If you look at the top of page twenty-two in both the water and the sewer fund. That's mainly due to the depreciation expense. So from a cash flow standpoint, you're you're getting a positive cash flow from operations, but you do want to fund that depreciation for future maintenance. Essentially, as as your assets are are getting older, you're going to want to have some funds reserved for that. So I want to look at making sure that the depreciation is funded as well and not just a cash cash dispersion. And then overall, I guess, when you look at the overall fund balances, then you do have seven months of operating expenses, which is a good positive fund balance in the general fund. Really, two to five is kind of a recommendation. So it is a good fund balance in your in your general fund. As well as the water and sewer fund, you have over one year of of operating expenses covered. The lower funds, the liquor fund only has about two months. And with the golf fund, it doesn't have a lot of operating cash flow at this point. And then the gap, the golf course continues to run a deficit. It did have a positive cash flow this year, ten thousand dollars to pay down that that debt, but it's up to till that debt's paid off. It's it's running a deficit. Reserved. Questions on the financial statement? You should have also received a letter to the council. This is a communication with governance letter that comes with every audit. The key points, I think, on the bottom of page one and the top of page two is it talks about estimates and just some of the balances that you're seeing different in here versus what you're going to see from more from an operating standpoint from Christina's whole PIB and pension liability adjustments. Those are estimates that come from an actuary and there is those liabilities don't have a cash flow associated with them. So there is no cash payments with those debt payments. Remember. The bottom of page two talks about correct and uncorrected misstatements, and this goes to the the finding as far as audit adjustments during the year that were more than material. A couple of key ones is the first one is related to the transfers. So both the general fund and then the other smaller governmental funds had significant journal entry or changes in what amounts that would have been presented without an audit adjustment. The fourth one has to do with the credit card receivables. The statement started. The net deposit was reported as revenue instead of the gross sales and that reported in that fees. So that was the reason for the credit card receivable fees not being recorded in the liquor fund. The that was the cause. So as a for financial statement presentation, you have to report that growth revenue and then a fee expense for that charge. The fifth one, the liability amounts for the DMV in charge, that is one that Christina was aware of and brought to our attention. I mean, we had to get it the process to get it fixed in the process. So so as far as it was a material adjustments from the audit standpoint, something we had to do, but it was what it wasn't part of the internal control finding section essentially because it is something that Christina was aware of.
Yeah.
The top of page three, a couple of them, the adjustments to allocate community development project funds and then the third one down there, expenses for the maintenance facility. Those were related to ensuring that the transactions essentially are in the proper fund versus even if the cash might end up in one fund, like the revolving loan fund borrowed money to the enterprise funds to make some of their some of those project payments. When cash comes back in related to those, they need to get recorded into the proper enterprise fund and then moved versus going directly into some of these into some of these special revenue funds that have a specific purpose. It's not part of that revenue stream. It should be recorded there. So those are the reasons for those. It wasn't that the the receipt wasn't, it wasn't a proper receipt or proper disbursement. It's more making sure it gets to the right pot. And in the end, it did, but the presentation of how it got there, so you can track from how it got came to the city till how it ended up.
Appreciate that clarification. Otherwise, it looks like the money went in my pocket.
Right. Yeah. It was all it was all there in the total columns. It was just how it's presented. We talked about the different special revenue funds and question that most. Well, if you feel free to contact me or have Christina contact me and we'll fill that little bit of the domain. I want to thank Christina and chap aren't here, but it was enjoyable to work with again, too. Appreciate that.
I just had one kind of a typo. This thing we should not the whole company because I know you state you were not needs report on the official directory, but on page five it states that Nicholas Teitz is the vice mayor and for twenty twenty-four is Donald Johnson.
This is on twenty-three, though.
Yeah, correct. And Nicholas Teitz was not the vice mayor for twenty twenty-three. For twenty twenty-three, Ronald Frederickson was.
Okay.
So as of that's correct, I was at twelve twenty-one. Nothing major. I just wanted to indicate that.
Okay.
People shouldn't get, yeah, make them sign me up. Thanks.
Thanks, John.
Travel along just not half hour.
Or some days. I'd let Tim comment on that. I don't have any.
Yeah, he's often on my suite.
Yeah. I'm a much needed.
So no updates on that?
No. It's family library.
So I did receive the feasibility reports this morning. I apologize for its delay, but the first draft came in early last week and I requested with steps through some changes to the document. It was missing some vital information that I think both the library board and the council really wanted to see. You did not have a clear enough amount of time to go through it. In summary, there's three main sections. The first section looks at all the deficiencies or the current of the current state of the building. Provides updates and suggestions to that. And then at the end summarizes all of those updates and on a five and ten and future plan costs. And then the second section is with this evaluation of the existing building. Suggestions for potential changes to the building to accommodate the needs of the library going forward and potential expenditures that that would cost. And then the last one is just a, you know, for public use in some a summary of, you know, what libraries do for communities, how important they are. Would Seth believe that that was a vital need for the feasibility since it is public dollars or using any improvements to library? I would like to call attention to I guess, tell me these are paged. I guess it would be sixty.
Six zero?
Yeah, the space needs assessment. In my opinion, this is the nuts and the bolts of what the council is probably looking for. With Seth states that with the exception of the restrooms on the existing plan, the store, the storage mechanical rooms and the office, the floor plan of library is completely open. And of those closed spaces, they find the fouling at its current size. Minimum requirements identified by Minnesota State Building Code call for only a single user toilet room. The roofs, the restrooms are oversized currently compared to the minimum requirements identified in building code. While this is not inherently a bad or undesirable thing, the current restrooms are not equipped with necessary divider stalls to take full advantage of a multi-occupant restroom. The mechanical room is trying to serve as a kitchenette space in order to provide our equipped kitchen, search kitchenette services. This function will be best served in a separate space. And locating the office near the main entry provides seclusion and creates dignity for those accessing accessing the food shelf items found just inside the main entry, but significantly interferes with the desired sightlines from the front desk. They quote basically what they heard from staff that the library has shared stories of holding large group events in the library throughout the year. They spoke of the need for spaces with varied levels of privacy and acoustic separation. They described a desire for a better functioning kitchenette space. They questioned why the restrooms are sized the way they are. And they shared why it would be helpful to have dedicated spaces for small group studies and larger group conferences. It continues saying the current library layout provides an adequate number of book stacks, but is lacking in providing spaces for reader seating along with small study spaces and larger conference rooms. While there is nothing specific to provide acoustic separation across the current layout, specific considerations for the library could be to invest in the following decorative hanging acoustic ceiling rifles, acoustic end panels for library stacks. Their objective for the various concept layouts were to illustrate various strategies for achieving desired goals or at least elevating the functionality of the existing space. Options A and B in the subsequent pages strategizes that remain within the existing footprint. And then option addition is a concept illustrating an eight hundred square foot addition. That's what they will need could be added to the existing footprint. Option A, the primary goal was to provide substantial increases in program functionality with minimal changes to the existing floor plan. This option converts the restroom for use of the office, allowing for direct sightlines of the main entry. Small study spaces are provided by converting the old office room and enclosing a new space by shifting slightly the location of the reception front desk. A conference room space is added by converting and extending the old storage room. Storage spaces can reconfigured into small closet-like spaces. Option B, the primary goal is to relocate the reception front desk to a new space with direct lines to the main entry. New layers of security are developed or providing a lockable door at the division between the main entry and the open library spaces. This allows potential for the food shelf room to remain open and accessible during off hours. Study spaces and other private rooms are given dedicated space along the southern end of the building, leaving the open stacks and kids area largely intact. Option addition is states the primary goal for option C is to illustrate a layout that captures the potential to include all of the desired goals in one single strategy. If I can skip over the cost summary and just move to the next four pages, they provide what the existing floor plan is of the library, then concept A, B, and the addition for consideration. Going back to the numbers, if the public library right now was to remodel at current square footage, they expected to cost somewhere around four hundred twenty thousand dollars. The addition would be another two hundred fifty-six thousand totaling six fifty-six with soft costs. So another one point one million dollars if we did everything. And then they provided two thousand twenty-six and twice she remembers in that review. That's the part I wanted to call most attention to. The first section does have details about the building, lighting, plumbing, everything else, ADA, parking, and suggestions. And suggestions to improve all of those and costs to, um, cover that. Despite the cost level. My intention to bring this to the council was to receive feedback on. What the council, um, sees in the feasibility study, what they liked about it. What they believe would be useful to the library. The library staff has not gotten this yet. They know it's here waiting for them to see it.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see this earlier.
No, no one did. I got it this morning, I said.
Oh, I, I saw it. You, you sent out the revised.
Yeah, I did.
So I think. The. You know, the overall assumption from the beginning is that the existing building is not sufficiently sizable with leverage accomplished. So I, I don't see us considering any option for that existing structure without adding onto. And when he said eight hundred, I mean, that seems like a kind of a small. Addition to me is, you know, what's the cost between that and those? I do think the retrofit of the existing space seems to be. Overly estimated high and I, I think if we are going to retrofit the existing. There's going to be many economies of scale to do it in, with in conjunction with constructing and additions. But you got, you got the GC, general contractor who's going to do everything in the old and the new. Part at that point, you know, consistent light fixtures and all that, so. It seems to be a little on high, but I don't know if we can come through with that much. I wouldn't suggest, you know. Doing things for our retrofit existing without. Immediately moving forward with some type of investigation, design, if it's more than this. Cost bins on an addition. Be adequate space. They have, you know, illustrated that they had under square feet. A lot of vacant. That building in the alleys. Issues, space. They did mention some good points about drainage, obviously slope increases.
They did.
Provide a retaining wall.
I was actually surprised about the easement, um, drainage on the lumberyard building I was unaware of.
And it didn't require an easement at the time because the city owns.
Because the city owned the building.
He was the owner, right?
Yeah.
Now it's been sold.
And it didn't even come up in, in the sale of it first. I mean. I don't know if anybody even knew about it. I imagine somebody did at one point. With two of the council members. Not here. Obviously, I, my intention was to have library look at this as well. Um, come up with some feedback, bring it together. And get both boards together to really have a good conversation about this. And find out what the next step would be.
Yeah, one of our council members is not here. It's our library representative.
Correct.
She, but essentially, I think before we continue. Um, I just did want to give you two reactions on, you know, two safety considerations. They have no. Open space in front of the electrical panels, which I think is a safety violation in any facility. Companies I've worked for, we hash mark it out, the floor yellow tape or whatever. And the second was the top of the water heater is used for flammable material storage, which would be nice to. Stop using it for any storage. There's roll of paper towels on there sideways between the hot water and the electrical line, I think. So.
All doing names.
Yeah. You got a story of twenty volt electrical line. Eat, water heater something else, so. There's a few things that you could just review the pictures.
Uh, then there's other things too. I mean, just the amount of egress that's blocked with the amount of books that.
Yeah.
But the, the friends board has accumulated and really. Creates problems.
But their point is well taken. You don't, we don't need two restrooms. And each of the two is oversized according to Asia requirements, so. We're unisex restroom, I think that's obvious. Would be incorporated into any plans.
Would, um, the existing board members that are here like to have more conversation with, um. The remaining board members and library at the next council meeting or push it to the next work session?
I think. I, myself first. Yeah.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of options or conversations.
I can invite library board members?
Rather than elongating.
Okay.
Um, yeah. That way everybody can. Have time to look at this and go over it.
Was there anything missing on the study that, um, you were. Unhappy not seeing or do you think it was sufficient?
I haven't attacked it. I haven't attacked, look at this.
Okay, Ron?
Um, well, my concern, being in this area, is roofs. Has, has the roof been replaced, do we know, since construction or?
Um, the shingles on that building were replaced. I believe it was either fifteen or sixteen after a hailstorm. So I, I noted that that wasn't noted by Edwin Seth, and I was certain I had mentioned it when they were on site. But they had stated in here that that was unknown and I was pretty sure that that. That building was done on the same year because the lumberyard is done the same year too.
Okay.
There were at least three or four locations that needed to have. We should go back to that. Anything else? We'll try to get more people here.
Yeah.
So I don't have a lot to, um. Report on the co-op conveyance. I did reach out to the state. Um, before the packet went out, um, the transportation specialist at Mendota is still. Um, working with the environmental stewardship office, um, reviewing. And going through the appraisal process. Request for the additional property that the co-op is asking for. Um, they hope to connect with those. Uh, two entities and have more of an update mid-August, so I hope to have more information to be by the August work session. Black Duck. Okay, um, so the Black Duck restoration has taken, um, a couple significant turns. Um, good and bad, uh, good, the London Foundation. Awarded the city a ten thousand dollar grant from their small communities, um, work, um, fund. To add to the costs for improving the site. Um, as I stated at a previous work session, um. Received some quotes from Pierce Concrete to beautify around the Black Duck and. Highly understated the amount of square footage I needed, but, um, London actually came through. It was remarkable, so. Will receive notice somewhere around the first of August, um, so I provided. Um, just the documentation I got from them about that. Um, the third document I gave you was just the current restoration, um. Budget and where all the donations came in, including the blending grant. I received, I've been trying to hook up with Rob Jensen from Johnson Conservation since mid-June. Um, hearing my last communication with him in early April, then he had us on the calendar for. Uh, late May, early June and not seeing him here and then playing some phone tag. Received a phone call from his wife. Week ago Friday. Um, Mr. Jensen. Uh, will not be able to perform the restoration as agreed to. Um, his health is not well. And his wife had to pull her contract. So I called a few people, found a few referrals. And provided in your packet two additional conservatories. One is KCI and the other one, um, is, uh, excuse me, um, Midwest Art Conservation, both out of Minneapolis. I've spoken to the owners of both of these entities. Um, they do, uh, work on statues and, um. Uh, other sculptures all over the Twin Cities and all over the states. Um, provided to them Jensen's, uh. Review, um, of the statue. And they both had difficulty understanding the deficiencies in the statue from his report. Um, so I spent a good amount of time with them on the phone, explained to them, you know, the history of the statues, what needs to get fixed. They both would like to, um. Help us and do the restoration on the statue. But unfortunately, they would need to come and do a site visit themselves and that's understandable. Um. So they've both proposed, um, that they could do a one-day visit to, um. Uh, Black Duck. It would, either one of them would cost anywhere from twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars for staff and timing and travel, and they would all try to do it within a day's time. And then they could come up with a more adequate, um, cost analysis of what it might do to repair the old duck. So my intention tonight was to provide to the council that update and then look towards. Providing one of them be okay to do that site visit. They are both very busy, um, would not be able to do, uh, the work until twenty five now. They both told me that either one of them would be fantastic. They both said. The other conservator is great and their staff is great and they share work all the time and they also know, um, uh. KCI was the one that told me that I was the third, um, entity that reached out to them. That lost, um, the contract with Johnson Conservation to date, so. Um, they're well aware of his work. Um, they know that he does a good job, but they are sad to see that he won't be able to finish. I'm looking for feedback.
Would. The road forward be to pick one of these to come up and estimate or both and see what.
One, just one. Yeah, I mean, they were both very, very truthful with me. They said, it doesn't matter if you pick me. Or the other person, we'd be happy if either one of us got picked. We do and share work together, um, take over work when one comes over, you know. It's busy, um, they know the staff. They had no problem with either one of us or if we picked either one of them.
And both again said nothing this year, twenty twenty five, with the others, no difference.
That is correct. This late in the summer, they would be able to do the site visit only.
Yeah, I, I looked the, those resumes and I couldn't quite figure why you're putting them on there because they're, it seemed like they're highly educated, fine art people like, you know. The Sistine Chapel ceiling needed a touch, I would hire these guys. And I'm thinking, we have a fiberglass duck that was made in some fiberglass plant that did, made boats, I think.
Well, and here's the, here's the turn to that. I also reached out to Marshall Larson, who is a Parks and Rec, um, person down in Amity, and. She too said you could hire somebody that knows how to work on fiberglass and have it done too.
Hmm.
I don't, I mean, she gave me a couple of referrals. I haven't had a chance to really dig into that because I won't receive it today. Um. I don't really know how to proceed, to be honest with you. Do we do the work ourselves and find somebody out of the world that can just. Slap a couple of pieces of fiberglass on this duck or do we really put the care it deserves? Especially with the amount of public and private donations that have been put forth to take care of it.
Yeah, I see. We have done by a professional. You know, especially in a credit of one like this.
The company that made this now, they're no longer a business. Though you would attach something at one time.
All I know is the company that wrapped it in fiberglass did can do this back then and, um, I think the information that Cease gave me. That was back in the eighties maybe? Don't recall.
Yeah.
That was.
You had a.
Okay.
You had, you had an attachment.
I did have an attachment. Yeah, that's when it very first started.
Yeah, does I, because this, I think is a redo. Originally the duck was concrete.
I don't know if it's wrapped in there. Both of these conservators even asked me that. Is it fiberglass? It's all fiberglass, I said, I really don't know.
You could hear it. They, when the vandals pulled this duck off the pedestal, probably debris and broke it into two pieces in the middle of the street, I think it was all gone.
Is that the same one? That's over here?
Well, no, if this is fiberglass, I think I'm saying it had to be rebuilt at some point. Because the part of their sentence was, they were not very bright in the car, they had to come to the Black Duck City Council meeting and publicly apologize for desecrating our symbol. I'm not sure the outer layer of the duck over there is plaster.
This one?
Yeah. They have to look. See, that one or that one, one of the two of them. Plaster, knock on.
I think this one's fiberglass and the old one started out as plaster. And from that report and what Cease said, it was wrapped in fiberglass. Uh, both, I told both the conservators, I'm not really sure what's inside there. All I can tell you is there was a crack on the back of his head, all the way down his neck, and you can only go in so far, so I don't know what you're going to find on the middle.
Let's just get out with KCI and have them check it out.
KCI?
Well, I would ask Christina, do you have any improvements or?
I don't, I, I, I talked to them both and they were both wonderful people and, um, they're both very. Excited to be able to help us, so it.
You have no.
It, it, no, I got, I got warm fuzzies from both of them, Ron. Yeah, they were great and I was just like, oh my gosh, what do I do? I have to start all over again. Yeah.
I think we should go forward with one. Uh, once, KCI, so we should get a cost so we know what we're doing.
I know.
It might change.
Oh, yeah.
From what Mr. Jensen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's going to change.
Yeah.
Since we have such a great, uh. Amount of donations from different people in the community, I think we should have somebody come up and look at it, kind of explore it.
Okay. I'll call KCI. Yeah, absolutely. As soon as I can get him on the calendar, I'll let everybody know. But yeah, that's, that was my thought too is, uh, we went into this expecting a professional. We should be done. We should continue pursuing it that way. Hey. We can. Um, I also got the solidity or study for City Hall. Um, what's up? Did it pretty much in the same fashion as. At the library one, right? Um, they went through the whole building with the deficiencies. Provided, um, cost analysis of. All of the things that need to get done. What I took away was. Had the. Demolition project continued. And surface treated. City Hall and Anderson's, we felt it, it's a good possibility. We may not have had the water issues, but. Not sure I hundred percent agree that that's the only problem. Um, so they're recommending that that finish. And the water intrusion, um. Plan that was provided to us last fall be done as well. So. If you look on pay.
Where is that? Where's the study?
So I gave it back in November. Um. I don't have it in this packet. But I could get it back to you guys. You want it separate? Because it's not in here.
But yeah, as I read through this whole thing.
Mm-hmm.
I kept on referring.
Popping it up, yeah.
Popping up to this and I, and I look back. And went back a little bit, I could not find that study anywhere.
Okay. Okay. That's the water intrusion study that was done. It was only like a.
It's an appendix on it, isn't it?
Well, I don't know if they actually, they're in there, but they, that's the hazard.
I mean, there was, it clicks for the back of the building.
Oh my, yes, it is. Caleb is correct. Yes. It's a appendix. It's on the last four pages of the document.
But so it, there was, isn't there more to it than just that? There, there must have been more to the. The study. How? What was supposed to have gotten done, it didn't get done?
You're talking about the outside of the building, not the inside of the building. Okay, Caleb and I are talking about the inside.
Yeah, there's a deal where they had a trench drawn up to the basement with a bunch of.
That too is in here as well. It's free, it's right before the water infiltration. Document and what's in here is the plans of how the sub level of the building should have had. Um. You know, a surface treatment to it. Um, you know, if you remember Steve Rose, when he put this together. It was kind of still unclear as to what the lower level of the building to the north of us looked like and if there was a gap between. This foundation and that foundation. The best that the um architects could tell during this review was. That icky portion of the masonry that's up against the city hall right now. They believe to be part of the building that was taken down. And because there's no. Um, direction for the water to go and that portion is exposed and the other and the city hall is now exposed and there's water getting in between. From up by the roof area straight down to the lower level. I don't know if that's all part of it either, because I also told the architect that after one very large rainstorm, I walked downstairs and where the old fuel. Oil um type that has its daylight outside, there was water dripping out of that. So I don't even know where that opening is on the outside of this building. So regardless, that would probably be exposed at some point when that other section of the building that.
Yeah, I think your comments are good as far as. The water intrusion in the basement and the finishing of the demolition plan, so to speak, is probably the top priority. If we're gonna leave that ugly wall, it will build, which I would. I'm not necessarily gonna take that. I mean, I think. I don't know what the demolition plan was, but I think there should be some flashing on both walls so that it doesn't come down. We gotta get a metal cap up there. So there's no.
Yeah.
If we're gonna leave it as up there, then it should be. Sealed up and made a part of this building, I guess, and then hopefully if somebody builds another building, it'll all be covered up. Look at it. The uh water remediation in this building should be.
Better.
Done as well. Uh, I noticed they did mention the roof was kind of at the end of its cycle. The one thing I noticed from both an earlier report than this one was the. Scupper and the drain is undersized, so I think we should, it's part of re-rooping, maybe before, let's try to see if we can get that.
Yeah.
Probably sized and I think the. How, pardon the uh roof, the opening that drains to the outside directly without this covered.
Right, so behind this back office directly above is an exposed area for a sepper.
Yep.
But the, the membrane on the roof goes clear up to the edges of the, the walls and over the coven. So all of that is plugged, so the only place the water goes. Literally is the drain that's. Probably in that wall right there between the entryway and that front office that goes clear downstairs.
And I'm assuming that goes in the sanitary sewer?
Yes.
Do you know, like? I don't know if that mattered on, I can't look at it again. Yeah, so I'm sure we're treating all that water and pumping it out to the lake. That's the like period.
Yeah.
Uh. And then the other thing I noted is, I don't know what influence we can have on finding property, but they apparently have never had an eavesdrop or anything. Water off of their roof, the only place Anderson. Building currently known as Anderson Fabrics Water has gone just directly off the north side of. Building, which was directly onto the roof of the building that was so rotten that it had to be demolished.
Right.
So.
Um, I spent a decent amount of time speaking with Woodset about the parapet. And if removed, what that would do to the neighboring property. It, it appears as though their. Their membrane is over the top of that parapet. And partially on top of this um east wall. So if that parapet came down, their roof will have to get mitigation too.
Yeah, they'd have to redo their cap, the last cap.
Yeah.
Seems to be a cosmetic uh stucco wall. They don't have a building but no other wall and they've got bricks behind it.
They've got to.
Yeah, man, the building's been there since nineteen ten or twelve or if you look at old, old pictures, it's not there, but that's been there. There, in the picture of uh nineteen fourteen of a bunch of model T's out in this intersection, it's there, so I know it predates nineteen fourteen. But regardless of the parapet, it would be nice to get a eavesdrop on the back of their building, the drains toward the alley, toward our building.
Right. That's my understanding. They've had thunders review it, but I don't see the business. Um, the shades are moving forward with that yet and it's been well over a year.
Yeah.
So I don't actually have the, the lacking on that.
They, I haven't looked at the aerial photograph in a while, but I believe the adjoining real estate does belong to this parcel. Their water is draining on somebody else's property.
Right.
It was off the edge of that roof. Or toward the alley, I know they aren't for access. Somebody were to build a structure here, then that water would be on top of that structure.
That's a pertains to costs. I'm not surprised about the roof costs and the removal, but I figured it would be somewhere around one fifty enough. Um, but they, they add a lot of other evaluations in there. I, I was a little surprised about. How our bathroom isn't ADA, our mirror isn't low enough, our sink isn't low enough. Apparently some stuff has changed since that went in. So they went through with a fine-tooth comb on the entire building. Um, nothing new about the ba, the basement. That's a complete gut. There's a lot of stuff in there that just should come out. Um. But. Uh, if you look at the summary on page sixty three. It gives you all the totals. They break it into a zero to five, a five to ten and a plus ten year project costs for everything between. Contingency and contracts and design and it's. Just under seven hundred grand.
Yeah, the basement, I think, is water-proofing part. What has to come out to accomplish that, but. Other than the storage, there's nothing we can do with that because there's no way to make it a client.
Right.
It'll never be accessible, so I would say. Minimize activity down there other than what's necessary to. Code issue and get access to do some water.
Right. The guidance I need at this point is. I have to continue writing the narrative with costs for Beltran Electric Cooperative or this Red G program. So that I have a clear understanding of what the city is willing to um invest money in. And the last conversation the board had was, we're gonna wait for the feasibility study before we even. Agree to do anything. Um, obviously you don't have all your board members here to even do that, but um. I'd like to get a feel where. The remaining three. Are at, do we um go down the path of. Doing the renovations or do we, you know, take Mike's suggestion and. Get rid of the building, start over?
Well, we don't have any costs on a new building, but I can't imagine what would have cost to reconstruct a building of this type. Bricks, mortar. You want a building like Public Works on a cement slab?
You can make anything, uh new construction, you can make it look brick. It doesn't have to have a brick foundation. Now, you can make any size you want with construction. It's gonna be a hell of a achievement.
When you start pulling new layers, well, this whole building for twenty amp, oh, you know, this, this is where the costs come into all this. Is you pull a new wire down for that all the, and you pull a new, you know, this is where you're getting retro fit everything. That's where you're, you're costing. You know, it, it adds up fast. I was kind of going through some of this stuff. You know, and we still have a hundred year old foundation. That, that's where I'm at. Now, and now. And we still have a water problem. You know, it's. Bad, bad deal how. You have to spend fifty thousand dollars just to get the water to keep coming down, you know, all the new sidewalks all the way around. Um, and, and you know, outside. To get the water to quit coming back into the building itself. Um, and then you got a third retrofitting everything, you know, and you, you, you're gonna be living in a mess here. If you could even be older. Well, that's, you know, I'm kind of with my guys.
Also, just one more thing to throw out there. I know that the owner of that lot right there would sell that lot back to the city for exactly what it was purchased for. You could build, you could start there, build there, move into there, take this down, hook into the new building. Nobody ever misses a beat.
We'd still be on the book for the hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars that we have from deed to take those buildings down on top of that.
But we're still gonna be in. Still on that, like what?
Well, half of it would get, would get forgiven from deed once a commercial uh. Building gets built on there by a non-public entity. So go from one sixty eight to eighty four.
Now, so if Teddy took it over, we, that would not be forgiven. Yeah.
That was part of the agreement. Yeah.
Basically, we were on the hook for eighty six thousand. We gotta pay eight six no matter what from what you just said.
Yes, until something else is, but yeah.
Eighty six thousand there, you're still gonna be cheaper than seven hundred thousand in this whole building. It's still gonna be a whole building.
And then. While all this is going on, where are you gonna have your office?
I would not, pardon. You guys want the numbers. I'm giving you numbers. Let's look at numbers first before we start thinking more logistics.
Yeah. I mean, the city hall has been in a lot of different places since they demolished the old. I, when I visited one time, I think it was in Public Works Building. I remember either that or the other cheap metal building down the railroad. I remember seeing a sign, city hall, I think, my god, they have offices, I mean, this is decades ago. And I think it was in the upper yard and what, why not in a disney, please, I mean, it's been around because. During several visits here, this was the library. The library was in this building.
That too. And what works was downstairs, like their offices are downstairs.
Uh, it was a recent day, words, I should say, recently, but.
Yeah.
The last two decades or so. I don't know how long city hall has been in here, but it was fully the library, number of visits. I was moving away from decades.
Well, the other two members were here. Where do you think the collective would um land on? Build new versus fix?
I have no idea. I think we need Baxter, we need the mayor. In the poll. Or as well.
Well, and we can have more of a conversation at the August fifth meeting. Um.
Hey, people would like to know the cost of.
Yeah, I was gonna say I can talk to JV, try to get some footprint costs or something. For a different square footage.
And where's the money coming from? Do we have money to pay another. Facility, like what we're paying for over there.
Red, that red, that Red G program for Beltran Electric Cooperative is our only option because we already exceeded our capital improvement plan.
Not really gonna be able to make that pay. Because, I mean, we're strapped, our infrastructure, everywhere else in the city is. Houses, I think. We're gonna put ourselves in so much debt that when shit does happen. We're. Even with the parapet stuff, we still have to come up with money for all that stuff. Or when do we stop spending? That's.
Yeah, what?
If you have one going on here and you got one going, practical one across the street, a bribery, if we're turning one vacant launch into a bigger vacant launch, we build a building. I mean, I'm sure this lot would sell.
Yeah, and I don't know, you know, the rest renovations of this, a existing building could be staged over any amount of time. And we're grandfathered in on a lot of stuff, like you're talking about the electrical. We're not required to replace the electrical. These are fourteen gauge, fifteen amp outlets. Those were legal at the time of installation. Pretty much like you were saying, no, you get the basement. I have Marvin two wiring in my house. If you want a historical artifact, it's totally legal because it was legal in nineteen ten when they installed it. I have now, a lot of it's been replaced, but some of it from the museum standpoint, I don't want to touch. But um, so you know, you're, we wouldn't have to pull the wires. If we did, we could do it eight years from now, ten years from now. A bunch of things in second.
Well, and I, I do appreciate the timeline that Woodset has provided between, you know, urgency to. You know, ten plus years later, but. My conversation with all of them is the water infiltration and the roof are by far the most important things to fix right now.
You got a roof and water fix, yeah. Of the bone, you still. Yeah, roofs is, I would even put that on first. Because we have a building over here where there's gardens of trees growing on the roof. You wanna see small trees growing on the roof. And this one over here, now we're gonna. Add this one. And that is specifically why the nineteen oh three city hall building stormed out because they never fixed the roof and it got so rotten. They had to wash the building. I actually, somebody took me to the second floor up there and it didn't leak so badly that, that it had a hardwood floor and the floorboards were all warped. It was. Year, decades leakage, I guess, I don't know. As a kid, I didn't understand what roof wasn't fixed, but it wasn't that pretty. The M word, the M O L D word, I think, certainly think we want to keep this.
Oh, maybe even sharing that one once you get done. Okay, well, I'll.
We could table it and.
Well, yeah.
Be good to see what happens.
Put it on the August fifth meeting again.
Yeah, that's good.
And. It's more feeding. Okay.
More numbers on.
So.
New, new stuff.
I, I left the punch list on here because I thought there was one thing that we still didn't have done and I did not print it out, so I could be wrong.
Is that FRP board or was that? Just the FRP, yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
In the wash bay or whatever.
Feeling up like, really, you know?
I'll let Brett know when he talked to Clint or somebody.
Yeah, with the humidity and the weather and all the rain and everything. It's something that we, you know, we discussed the last time. We weren't really gonna know until summer came around and we could see what it was really gonna do. It's bubbling and feeling away. So I'm not sure what what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it, but it's unlikely we don't look at it at some point.
And then on the H, Don, on the Summit Avenue for. Why would that say two thousand twenty seven project? Um, for Summit and Highway seventy one. I I got some additional request information from Ethan. Since he was here, um, they're still collecting data on the corridor. Um, states the next statement would be to start building their preliminary design model. The design group will want to know about areas like the lighting at Summit and seventy one, which I'm pretty sure we addressed. Last, um, I'd like to inform them about our intent to replace these lights. As we discussed, can you conform? He's requesting, if we can confirm at this time, the city is still desiring to participate with Minba for the replacement of the two lights. The formal agreement documentation would be written later near the final plan, right before letting. Um, if we capture the intent now, then our design team will have to rework the plans, so. Basically, I think I shared with you guys an email from. After the first meeting he was here stating that the costs are roughly fourteen thousand per light. Fifty fifty cost, you know, favor points both of them. Um, states the city, if the city had interest in keeping the poles for parts that could be arranged. The city, of course, would be responsible for being there when the contractor takes the poles down and. The city would need to load them and haul them away to an offsite location if we chose to.
Yeah, we would absolutely heat them because they're not that old.
Yeah.
And then not there old.
Yeah, but they can be, they can be used again when inevitably somebody knocks them down again.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Or something, they knock it down someplace.
You know, you know.
But I mean, I I'd like to give Ethan the green light if it's the intention to work with them.
The bottom line is, we had previously had a question, could we reuse one of the poles because it was so new? And he said in this letter that if we wanted to do that, it would be a hundred percent of our expense to take down and replace. And if we go with two new ones, it's fifty fifty between us and Ben Dot.
Yeah.
Ben Dot has their chuckle ready.
Yeah.
I think our.
It seems like a Miller Brainerd to me, we just let them.
Get two ones in and then if there's any problems, we did everything they said.
Correct.
Then we could have the old poles placed. Back up somewhere.
Well, see, the thing is, I wanted to make sure that you guys understand that those poles, you know, with them going fifty fifty. Even if there are problems down the road, it's on us. We own it. It's. We've had, we've gone round and round since I came. It took what, a couple of years to finally get the right person to talk to and figure out that. They put them up originally and now we're responsible for maintenance, whether they're hit or anything from here on out. So they're technically our poles.
Right.
So anytime we can get somebody to go fifty fifty on something with us, absolutely.
It is.
Yep, I understood.
I'm gonna tell him to go ahead.
Yep.
Your other two council members can. Win it.
Who does?
I I got email this afternoon from the Boys and Girls Club. The Black Duck Branch is opening. This fall, flyer and information about their programs. Obviously, they're looking for money. Um, and they might need it. Um, I, Missy, I haven't been to change the meetings. Do you, uh? Were you at the one last week? I I, it's on my understanding, they hired a local director or person. Pardon me?
He used to be a counselor.
Hey, is that your friend?
That will sell them. Okay.
He's a cousin, Mike.
Oh. Okay, well, that's a lot to him. Lot of stuff to do.
Oh, I mean, yeah.
So anybody interested in. Helping out or volunteering or, oh, they're still looking for like a local director for it, I thought, too. It's been a while.
Wasn't that Deanna? The Adamson?
Oh, Deion Adams.
Yeah, Deion Adams. She in charge of this or something?
Lori Lundberg was.
Or that's who it was.
Lori Lundberg was kind of a. Apartment. She's since I mean, I raised Ford, I think. So. Um, otherwise, unless somebody else had something I didn't get into the packet, like Mike or. Whoever, Missy, wanted to share was, that's all I had for.
Yeah, if we're gonna donate, I'd like to give out the Jennifer Walker costume and then we could have a. Which is spent so far again. I know you gave us that recently.
You would mean that, you want that again? Yeah, I like that.
Anytime we have a, I mean, I think we're over budget at this point, so anytime we have a request, I can.
Thanks, they have.
Just wait there, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'll I'll put it under administration for conversation.
Yep.
No, just paper here for me for you, Mike.
Mine, mine just quick, you know, we touched on, we touched on the the main lift station last time, you know, quickly. I I talked to Justin. There's not really a whole lot of room for movement on this. Um, what I want to go over just quickly is. You know, this is for doing both pipes that are in that lift station. So there's two pumps that are in the lift station, right? That push water. This is our main lift station and every ounce of wastewater comes through. From there goes the the pumps push it into what we call the force main, which is under pressure the whole way out. To the ponds. What we had happening was essentially deterioration from. It's been twenty, thirty, forty years, whatever it's been. Now on that lift station, um, you know, your wastewater, you know, it it can kind of be acidic. It can not be, it's, it changes all the time. That stuff is worn out. We're at a point where one of them is done for. In fact, I had to shut that pump off completely because all it was doing was cycling the water in there. You know, we're we're running a pump for no reason essentially, which also, um. For lack of a better word, at the moment, fibs on my numbers about how much water is going out to our lagoons. The longer the pumps run, the more we think we're putting water out there, when in reality we're not. So right now, we're down to one. If that one goes, we're in some pretty serious trouble. Because that lift station is, you know, running every five, ten minutes at most. It's coming on, shutting off, coming on, shutting off. That's what it's supposed to do. But if we run out, those ponds are too far away to, you know, pipe anything there. We we run into a serious problem. So just to recap. The quote here is to do both of them and this is, you know, parts is. A heavy chunk of it, you know, installation services, a heavy chunk. It's twenty four thousand two ninety. Now, you can cut that somewhat in half. By only doing one of them that's in there, by doing the one that is fully broken. Right now, we could do that. You're not gonna get it completely in half because, you know, obviously you've got. Fees associated, you know, with bringing all the stuff in. We're gonna have to kind of set up a pump around and do a bunch of stuff like that. You're getting a better deal on two than one. You know what I'm saying here?
It's mostly labor.
Well, yeah, and bringing pumps in and all that. It's when you're already there and doing it, it's gonna save you money just to do the other. So the real dilemma here, right, is how long until. We actually have any kind of funding that we've been working on for four years now? And in all honesty, I think we're looking at before we really see any money to do anything, probably three years.
Yeah, Tim said twenty six at the earliest.
Twenty six hundred, so two years minimum.
So the sewer replacement fund was set up for this exact restoration issue, same with the. Um, water replacement fund, so my suggestion is these need to be provided on August fifth. And those dollar amounts that are in those funds are what, and whatever's left on our money and will be can be both pipes. Yeah.
Do we need, know what the balance of the sewer?
Yes, and I I would, I would provide that at that point, yes.
Those are flights?
Certainly, they go forward.
Yeah.
Is that flights?
The pumps, the pumps are good.
Or it's just.
It's not pumps, it's it's all the piping. What what it is, you've got piping has deteriorated. Then you've got, you know, your anchors and everything that are in that concrete. They need to be replaced. Everything. Associated with all that piping has to be done. And then, of course, the labor of it, the fact that we have to try to pipe, you know, around it in the time being. And that's the other thing. None of that stuff is on here one hundred percent. You know, this is mainly. What the material is that needs to go in there and what the labor is going to be for that.
Mm hmm.
We still have to come up with a way to move our sewage around that while we're doing this. So there's going to be added costs.
You could do one at a time.
No, they're in the same pit. They're they're both in the same thirty foot deep pit. And we have to get, we have to plug the sewer so that water doesn't come in there anymore. Get it all cleaned out and everything, go after it. I mean, we're looking at pumping water around for, you know, a day, two days, maybe three. That's a big chore in and of itself.
So when I flush my toilet, I won't notice any difference.
If we do it right. If it doesn't get done right, everybody's gonna notice in soon. Yep.
Well, I've had issues with my own personal life. They're unpleasant.
Tree roots, tree roots are the biggest problem. People don't understand that they're, you know, the end of the root is thinner than your hair. And it gets in everywhere.
Yeah, I've I've seen them because they're come, they're on the end of the snake after.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice, healthy tree roots, but.
So that's nutshell, just what I wanted to let you guys know is that, you know, I was hoping to work things down there. There really isn't. Unfortunately, it's gonna get higher.
Mike, can you paint a picture as to what that looks like when you reroute that water? While the work is being done, is, does it go in like, don't Mars tanks?
No, no.
Go into a holding facility? What what happens with it?
So what we're hoping to do, we have a wet well and a dry well right there. And they're not a well like you get drinking water.
Right.
Just this is how we refer to them. So you got a wet hole and a dry hole, basically. You've got plumbing in the dry hole that is higher than the wet one. Push the water up, it goes through here. We have backflow or backflow prevention in place. What we're hoping to do is that. At least one of those is good enough that. Or bad enough, however you want to put it. We're hoping to gut that. And what we're gonna do is on the backside of where the water comes in the wet well. On the backside of that, we're hoping to tie in back there, reroute reroute the water around. And essentially put a pump in there.
Mm hmm.
To push it so it maintains going out there and not get anything on the ground because I don't want to deal with EPA. So it's, yeah, it it's gonna be a treat. It could be a lot of fun, but, you know, with Minnesota Pump and us and Grow Water and everybody else. There's a lot of mines that have a lot of years into this kind of stuff. I'm sure we can come up with something pretty good to make for it. That's my hope.
I'll I'll get balance balances for you guys to review, get those numbers from the lake and.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be, it could be anywhere. It could be twice that amount when everything's done.
And that's, I'll I'll get a hold of Justin from Minnesota Pump Works. You know, we've been kind of throwing some stuff back and forth to each other, trying to figure out how to do it. And we'll really sit down and try to, you know, okay, how big of a pump do we need? What kind of, you know, do we need a pump truck on standby? What, we'll try to figure out and get a little closer numbers on some of that stuff. Unfortunately, it's gonna be a big variable, I can tell you that, but we'll try to at least get you somewhere in the.
Is he importing all stainless stuff or is it not even stainless? Like follows for names and stuff like.
Oh, let's see. Well, I know those rails are stainless in there. Flanges, gaskets. Got ductile. But, you know, I mean, you go stainless and we're gonna get.
Boy, double.
A lot. I know we got some stainless bolts and, um. You know, uh, not the stand pipe itself, but base and, you know.
Oh, yeah.
The what goes into the concrete and stuff, stainless on that, so that that's not an issue. But, yeah, not, not all stainless in there. Where the price would be a lot higher. But this again is just one of those things that this happens, you know, the this stuff deteriorates and there's nothing, nothing you can do about it.
Yeah, water wears out metal.
Yep, it goes when it's ready to go. That's just all there is to it. So that's it, guys. That's all I have.
Upcoming events to mention. Uh, Woodcarvers Festival is this Saturday.
That's right, with fibers of.
And don't forget, we have an annual very excellent entertainment show at the school that evening at seven P M. We have the annual variety show. Same day as Woodcarver starting itself.
All second that? All the paper?
Hi.
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 Did you see that? Well, head protection.
I just saw it today and that's Chris Hardman.
Yeah, he he called me.